I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for committee meetings, we do not have roll call?
No.
Is that correct?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Got it. I was just wondering, we don't, do we?
No, I just think it's in.
We usually take tenants. Okay, then we are going to just review the agenda quickly. We will have an invitation for public comment. We have several items for discussion, including review of the June committee summary, employment of employees. We have a first reading of some board policies, as is our practice, to consistently review all of our board policies over a two-year cycle. We will discuss the structure for our board meeting agendas going forward. We will also discuss board protocols and the development of a board member handbook. We will also get an update on the D 128 Culture of Care Comprehensive Plan from administration. And then we will discuss future agenda items before we adjourn. So at this time, I'd like to invite, oh, and I'll mention, our colleague Jim Batson, who is the chair of the P and P Committee, is not here tonight. So I'm filling in for him. So without further ado, I'd like to invite anyone here for public comment to please come forward. Going once. Okay, seeing none, we will move into our discussion. And did everybody have a chance to review the June committee summary?
Yes.
Any comments, feedback? Okay, moving on. Employment of employees. We have several items to discuss.
And under certified staff, we have a TBD for replacement math teacher. And so the person that will be replacing Taylor Sturtevant is Ian Taylor. Ian comes from us, graduated from Lake Forest College and has been working the past few years at Bannock Burns School in Bannockburn, Illinois, as a math teacher. So he is the TBD on there.
Right. So we will be voting on these items in the consent agenda?
Correct.
At the board meeting at 7:00 PM?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
One quickie. Dina Franchi?
Yes.
Physical welfare, Vernon Hills. It just says Bachelor of Arts degree in Northeastern Illinois University. What, can you tell me what the degree is? And I meant to send this to you earlier. I apologize for my lateness. And you can get back to me later on that if you want to.
I'm looking in the system right now. Hold on a second.
It just struck me as odd, but you know, they might have an endorsement in physical education, but they have a background in something else. I just wondered.
So her, and she, her degree from Northeastern with a major area in physical education with a minor in health.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding the employment of employees?
Nope.
Okay. Moving on, we have board policies for a first reading.
Yes. So hopefully in board docs, you're able to see the list of our board policies listed on there. And these are the updates from press that came out. Then obviously attachments on all those are all of our edits from there. So, you know, looking at these, Board Policy 2230, Public Participation at School Board Meetings and Petitions to the Board. And this was updated in response to some of the feedback regarding time minimums and maximum for public participation, with the minimum times being deleted. It actually makes more sense, I think, the way it gets rewritten. And it coincides with what we've been doing. So it's not going to change anything that we're doing. Actually, I think it reads almost better for the public if they ask what our policy is. Operational Services, Policy 330, Chain of Command. It's renamed. And just some of the cross-references are updated in response to our own internal D 128 review. Operational Services, 410, Fiscal and Business Management. This one is updated in response to continuous improvement changes. And then a style update to the legal references.
Quick question on that one?
Sure.
The ISBE guidelines, can we make a hyperlink directly to those?
Sure.
It's under budget planning?
I'm looking, I'm looking. Page.
Budget planning.
It's on page one in the middle, Budget Planning?
There you go.
It's the first paragraph, not the one that was stricken.
Mm-hmm, right. It's about halfway down.
Yep, I see it.
Is the hyperlink in the footnotes?
They have, oh, that's a good question, because a lot of the things are listed.
I'll look at that, though.
Did you want us to stop at each policy or just wait till the end? So I do have a question about 330, the chain of command.
Okay.
All right. So how, I guess I want to see, I know this is an organizational chart, but how strictly are we following this organizational chart as far as communications and how is it consistent with kind of our work policy? Being able to communicate with anybody on the chart, does that make sense?
It's a hard question to answer. How strictly are we following it? Like, that's a hard.
Strictly is it enforced? I mean, is it, you cannot speak to the person above? Well, first of all, shouldn't we have some kind of hyperlink to the chart, the policy? So anybody can see what that organizational chart is. I mean, I know I've seen it, because we've shared it before, right? So we probably want a hyperlink to that. I just think we have, you know, we keep talking about an open door policy, and is that going to limit people being, I don't know how to say it better?
So this is for school personnel. Are you talking about more communication with the community?
Oh, no, I'm talking about personnel.
Okay.
I'm talking about.
So if somebody has.
If a teacher has a problem or they're not able to talk to the superintendent, that's all I'm saying. I mean, I know we applied pretty strictly and told you, you can't speak to me about that. And I want to make sure that that's not, I don't expect that to be the environment that we're in.
I think I would describe it as, in general, we always encourage any problem or issue to be solved at the local level. So if it's in a classroom, we would want a department supervisor to be a problem-solving coach. But if that's not effective, we immediately would encourage conversation with other people, principal or superintendent or someone like that. So I think, I think in general, we encourage problem solving at the local level, but definitely also welcome feedback or questions when that's not working.
I think the sentence there is just very strict, maybe you want to.
So should instead of shall?
I, so, and these channels should be followed, and no level should be bypassed except in unusual situations. And I know that these have already been approved, right? So I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but it just seems very limited. And I, it does not foster kind of like the open communication that we've been talking about.
So these haven't been adopted yet. The revisions have not yet been adopted.
They're recommended from the press.
Yeah.
I think the other thing that I've seen in policies such as this, as being very specific in calling out an unusual situation, being for any harassment or anything that might involve your supervisor. So I think anything that talks about the chain of command, it's really helpful to let people know that if they are in any situation in which there's harassment or any kind of intimidation, that we encourage going way beyond and.
Right. But I, you know, I think from an HR perspective, having a clear policy in place about the chain of command is helpful when it is breached in an unhealthy way. If you have to direct somebody back to the appropriate person that they should be talking to, it's very helpful to have that policy in writing which to fall back on.
Well, that's just my, I just think, I think it's somewhat inconsistent with what we've been, if we want to have open communication. That's just. I've seen it applied very strictly.
Did you have some suggested wording or edits?
To the best of the ability, these channels should be followed to the best, or something to the effect where it's not prescriptive, and that if you were to change, if you were to go above, it doesn't preclude you from going above. The way it's worded now, you're precluded from that following.
So would that be something like language, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm just trying to brainstorm what may make it a little I know I should. easier to be implemented in a way that doesn't
These channels.
hinder communication and perhaps, go ahead and get a suggestion.
These channels should be followed, and no level should be bypassed. I don't know where you put that.
Clear your intentions to say, while we have an open door policy.
Yes.
Why not say that, while we encourage an open door policy at all levels, we believe that you should start at local level.
And I do think there should be some kind of a hyperlink to the chart that we've already discussed, so people know exactly where to go.
I'll work on some language on that.
There's no period at the end of that sentence, Brian.
Yeah, I see that.
What's going on here? We're just following up.
It just never ends, right? No periods. We have English teachers in the room. Sorry. Policy 470, the legal references were updated in response to five-year review.
I have a question there.
Sure.
Part C says, I think, it says be designated to achieve before July 1st, 2020, at least 50% reduction in the amount of solid waste that is generated by the district. Do we have any data on that?
That's funny, Dad. I would say no.
And I'll speak right next time. So my question actually is going to come at FNF, where I would like to see a new agenda item to discuss this waste reduction plan. So we can table this until FNF. But yes, what's the metric? How do we measure it? When was it reported?
We collect data on that last four years. Did we plan to, but then the pandemic supported the plan?
Yeah, July 2020 was crazy.
I like that it's an ambitious reduction, 50% reduction in the amount of solid waste generated by the district.
That was adopted in 2009. The 2009 adoption was made to make a reduction by 2020.
Okay, so it sounds like more to come on that one?
Sure.
Okay.
Policy 540, there are just some style updates done for the legal references. Policy 580 was renamed Court Duty. And just some legal references updated in response to our own internal D 128 review. Policy 5240, suspension, that policy was unchanged, and some style references to legal.
Is it a little weird that on, on those that we say refer to the agreement, rather than putting it there and having a hyperlink to the agreement?
Here's.
Correct. It just says, go here to see this policy. Why don't we have the policy in our policy manual? There's two of those that have direct references to the contract rather than just spell out the policy. Yeah, I mean, just copy and paste it.
Because, well, I guess if you update the contract, then you have to go and adopt and.
Adopt new policies.
Adopt a new policy and two readings.
Right, that's a good, good point. Right. Because we only look at these every few years. Sometimes longer, depending on what it is.
So if we update the contract, we don't have to update this policy, because the policy just refers to the contract.
Right. Okay, I'm all right with that.
Policy 6140, the policy cross-references were updated just in response to a five-year review.
I have a question about.
Sure.
And I know this is just an update on the cross-reference thing and whatnot, but where can I find policy-wise information or policy regarding school fee waivers and free introduced lunch as it pertains to homeless students? Is that part of this policy or another policy?
So this would be part of this.
And did I miss?
In, so in when you follow the McKinney-Bento Homeless Assistance Act, and so you're looking for their fees that they're paying? And whether they.
We're looking for what we've indicated as the policy for waiving fees for homeless students.
So then if we go to.
So that's 4140.
4140 is the waiver of student fees.
Okay, so it's in 4140.
Should we, well, four dots. Do we reference 4140 in 6140?
That's what I was looking, why is that? I'll have to check on why the cross-reference. Let me look on that, let me look on that cross-reference.
So now, I'm sorry, I just want to be clear, not only the fee waiver, but additionally, how pre-introduced lunch policies then would be indicated?
I will follow.
Thank you, Brian.
6290, just the policy was updated, cross-reference added in response to a five-year review.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
No, no, I want to wait.
I was so quick to move. Homework, we're at Board Policy 6290 homework. So I guess my question is about number three. And getting an understanding of how homework serves as a communication link between the school and parents' targets. I'm not clear on how homework serves as a communication link.
I think it can show the parents what the students are practicing in relation to a given unit of study. It also, some homework students have completed sometimes in class, or sometimes there's examples. And then there's additional problems or other things for the students to complete. So in that sense, sometimes homework can be thought of as somewhat of a model, if it is sort of a process that they're going through. I think also some people look at scored homework as feedback to students and parents on progress. Those would be the ways I could imagine communications. Thank you.
I had, I had another question, and that is, how does this cross-reference do like the grading policy? Because I think how homework gets graded is pretty variable, just based on my very single-person experience as a parent. So does this link up, or should it link up?
I think it will be one of the policies that we hold on the table as the Assessment and Grading Committee is doing its work this year. And I think one of the things we heard from students and parents was a desire to have a much more consistent reference point for how homework is assessed, how it counts towards a grade in terms of showing competence. We do have a very wide range of details in that. So I do think this is something that will definitely be something you receive some drafts on along the way this year. So you'll have an opportunity to hear what the committee is thinking, whose motives offers, and feedback would be done what your constituents or.
You know, the previous policy, 6280, is titled Grading and Promotion, and talks about establishing a system of grading and maintaining records and, you know, how they can be changed if an error is made. So, you know, when you're looking at our policies as a whole, I think that's a logical order, but it still might be possibly indicated to reference.
Yeah, I mean.
That.
I think you should add a reference, so you know where to go.
It doesn't mention homework specifically in the previous policy, grading and promotion. So maybe that's why they're not linked right now, because they're consecutive.
I was looking at press, and they don't have them cross-referenced to each other.
No.
Ready for one more?
Sure.
Also, on the homework, superintendent shop guidelines to ensure that homework one is used to reinforce and apply previously covered concepts, principles, and skills. It is possible that a teacher could assign something that has not been previously taught as homework assignment, in particular. Any teacher that is in a flipped classroom where the instruction happens at home, and they come in and do the tutorials in the classroom as opposed, so I'm just a little worried that that one is contrary to the way some teachers structure their classrooms.
But even in flipped classrooms, homework could be to pre-read an excerpt or an article or something like that, and then the actual discussion of writing something. How I think about flipped classrooms, it's where acquisition of content is done at home, so that the actual work can be done in the classroom, when that's the work that would be scored, is the work done in the classroom.
Sure.
I think I'm reading this to apply to have a three-pronged assignment and to only teach one of them, and then assign and grade the other two pieces that haven't yet been taught, is what I think this policy is trying to avoid.
Okay.
I think you clarified.
Yeah, I just, the literal translation, if we're implying something, then we should maybe get away from an implication, just say it. What exactly do we mean by that? And that was just an example. I mean, it's possible that you could be telling your kids to go do a research project, and they they have no background information on the thing, that they're just newly discovering, and that's a homework assignment that hasn't previously been covered in class. I mean, you could make it, you could say, oh, yeah, but it's, it falls within the realm of biology, therefore it's, you know, it ties to the curriculum. I just wonder what's the point? Why do we need that in there?
I mean, you could, you could, I mean, if you got rid of the word previous, and you just say it's used to reinforce and apply covered concepts, principles, and skills.
Sure.
I think it still needs to be, right now. I don't think taking the word previous yet changes the meaning. Because again, if you're in a flipped classroom, or if you're doing some reading that you haven't covered before, and then an assignment in class, I think it's still a little inconsistent.
But if you're doing an independent research paper, it has to still have some foundation that's been covered, right? You're not just going to give them necessarily completely new.
Well, I think that, I think the key word there is previously covered skills. So we would assume students have some of the basic research skills.
Right, I wondered about that.
Yeah, that's why I think for most assignments, we could imagine, we've been one of these, one of those variables, is an anchor point for students where they would be very lost. It might be in content, but it can just be skill. It could be vice versa.
I mean, it could be content, but it can be.
Can we just change the word and to or then?
So you used to reinforce or apply previously covered?
No, covered concepts, principles, or skills.
I didn't read it as a checklist. I read it as it could be one, could be three, could be five, maybe it's not one, maybe it's four. So
You could be tired.
I didn't read it as homework had to meet all five criteria to be considered homework. So.
Interesting. I interpreted it that it had to be all of those things. It is our policy that it has to be all of those things.
Yeah, I also read it as all. Well, then in that case, it does need to be clarified.
Do we think that changing that last and in number one to or is sufficient to address the concern?
I mean, I guess I'm trying to figure out the practicality. I think if homework was assigned, and it was a flipped class appearance, somebody could argue that that was not an appropriate assignment.
Right, because it wasn't covered in the class.
Exactly. And that's something here is, how are we supposed to know what they're doing? Or are we just supposed to watch this thing? Right now, they're not supposed to know what they're doing. But you have a policy that specifically says that you shouldn't do that. I guess it hasn't come up too much, but this is new language.
I guess I'm imagining the example of the flipped classroom, where you say, watch this 10-minute video. It's a different way of students acquiring content, just like read chapter four of Huckfin. And so I guess I still see it being on there now, if it's to read and answer questions on Huckfin, then you hope that students are familiar with the type of essay questions, or it's going to be a character and plot that they know. Those vocabulary and things like that, so.
Well, if the teacher has autonomy when it comes to what homework they assign grades to, and what homework is not for grades. My son comes home and says, I have to do these math problems, but we haven't covered them in class. But the teacher's intent when they go the next day is to review them and not score the assigned homework. Then I think this it makes, this number one makes that confusing, but the math teacher who assigned the problems they hadn't assigned before, but has yet, doesn't plan on grading that homework, they just want it done as a discussion point for class the next day. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to say, oh, you're violating the policy, you're not allowed to do that, if that is their method of instruction.
Although there's no mention of grade, grading, there's no scores, so most teachers are not signing points to homework anymore anyway.
Well, some are, some are.
Some are, some are, right. But I think by and large, many are, are not doing that anymore. Yeah, I just, it didn't sit well. I don't know how to fix it right now, but it's something that I can think about more. I mean, I just read it for the first time today, so.
We also have a DLT meeting tomorrow morning, so perhaps we could bring this language and have a conversation about that with a larger group, and then share some options when we get back for a second.
It's a great idea. It's a great idea. Okay, are you ready to move on?
Yep.
Policy six three three zero, and this was renamed from boards and scholarships. Um, and then we updated it in response to what we got. Just the one twenty eight review and had been updated since two thousand. Policy seven one five, the policy legal references were just updated in response to a five-year review. Policy seven two seven zero administering medicines to students, illegal references were updated in response to the compassionate use of medical cannabis program act that was amended by public act one oh one three six three. Um, and cross references were updated in response to some of the public acts. Um, requiring districts to adopt or update by eight seven twenty two and anaphylaxis policy addressing prevention of the response to anaphylaxis in response, in accordance with the ISB's model policy, um, which we follow. So so this policy uh now is going to be. I'll see seven two eight five was renamed. And again, that was a big response to public act one oh two four one three, which required districts to adopt or update um, anaphylactic policy addressing prevention response uh in accordance with the ISB's model policy.
This might also be a nice place to link ISB's policy.
See if they can wear that.
Okay, if it's available.
Yes. I don't know if it's, yeah. It was sent to us. I don't know. I have to look to see if that.
Okay. It looks like all the policies um that we were slated to do a first reading tonight um are complete. Next item D, review of board policies.
Our um review of some of our policies. Um, at this time, and we do review policy four one seven zero yearly, which is our safety and security. Um, policy, which is outline some of our um, that we have a comprehensive safety security plan with emergency operations. We coordinate with local law enforcement. We have a school safety drill plan um in effect and um, we uh do have to report that each year to the regional office of education and we um, do all of the drills. So from uh bus evacuation drills, fire drill, tornado drill to our safety drills and our safety drill that we have to do with in so many days of the start of school. So our policy states it, but then we also have to report that to the regional office of education and fill out forms. And uh that they uh check that. So under the drill plan, that's all outlined in there. Plus also in the safety drill about soccer ball safety, um, at AEDs. And we do have AEDs at both campuses, um, in the buildings and also um outside the buildings. At some of our athletic facilities and also uh because we do have some sports that are off campus, we have coaches that also carry AEDs. Um, those are checked yearly. We work with a um outside organization that checks to make sure that the batteries are charged and that the pads in there are all connected. So that's a yearly review that myself and the other directors. Policy seven one eight zero um outlines our prevention of and response to bullying, intimidation and harassment. Um, we do on our website, both websites. There is a dropdown link right directly to reporting bullying. And so uh parents and students, it's in a couple places. It's in the student dropdown at Libertyville High School. Parent dropdown menu at uh both schools, um, so Libertyville and Vernon Hills. Um, and um it's got information on bullying, but it also has a link to a form that parents and students can fill out. And when they do fill out that form, that goes directly to both buildings. So even if a Vernon Hill student fills it out, it goes to both buildings and it goes to myself. Um, we review the information that's provided in that. And then we um follow up with the students, with the parent, or with the full of the form. Um, even if somebody fills out anonymously, without much information, we do a lot of detective work and try to figure out, you know, what is going on. And do all that.
And it looks like for burning holes, it's under the student and the parent.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, so both schools, there's a couple of places. There's some places that's posted around school where you can also just click on the QR code. Um, so we have many people that have done it from their phones. Um, and you know, like I said, if they come in, we get notices on those right away. Um, policy section two, good timing of this, um, because it's also linked to our next um. For agenda, yeah.
Oh, I apologize. Can we just go back?
Sure.
I have a note here um from the last policy. And I just, I wasn't sure if it was clear because it wasn't clear to me, but maybe I'm reading it wrong in the restorative measure section. Um, which is on page two of that policy about, I don't know, we're in a way down. There are like specific policy for following up with the, let's call them offending students to make sure that they are sound of mind or safe. How do we ensure that not only is the person who is on the receiving end of the bullying is safe and in a good place, but that the again, perpetrating individual is not acting out in this manner because they are somehow at risk. And so I guess I'm looking for a policy that's more specific as it pertains to caring for all students. Like certainly, we have a low tolerance, if any, for bullying, right? And I know it's hard to sometimes step out of that mindset and say, why is the person who's doing what they're doing, doing that, right? And I'm wondering if we have specific policies that addresses kind of both ends of of the situation.
I would say that it's it's not so much a policy, but our our procedures and what our learning support teams um, you know, are working with from the team leaders to the counselors, to social workers or psychologists or um, case managers that, you know, they'll get involved. So if we do get a bully report and and again, a bully report might be, we might only have one name, we might have multiple names, we might have both names of students and that. You know, both students are, you know, um, you know, our teams work with. There might be some restorative practices that are done in the building levels with those students. But um I would say that, you know, both um, you know, whatever students are brought up in a manner that they are all being um that are team. So our counselors, social workers and team leaders are working with those students.
Everyone sees there being a draft of that. Right, okay.
I've seen some schools have that checklist protocol just to make sure that stuff isn't overlooked.
Yeah.
So that's something we may bring, I can bring to a future meeting because I think it is important for you to see what happens if this policy implemented. Um, because we will be doing trainings with any new staff member um as school starts, so it's going to be fresh on our mind. So that can be something we bring to an August committee meeting potentially. It's just to say and here's what the LST is. Or if I'm a teacher and I witness bullying in the hallway, what do I do? We we have steps outlined so that all staff understand what their responsibility is as well as the most convenient way for someone else to be investigated.
That's one thing that, you know, Armand will be working with uh both of our new schools, our assistant principals of all schools and our LLCs to ensure that, you know, those are followed and that we're, you know, and so it doesn't matter if the students here, there be people, there are students that are burning holes, that we are following the same steps and procedures and that, you know, step and procedures.
That sounds great. I think in light of everything that unfortunately.
Will be in check for all students involved should be part of that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So uh section two, and again, this is on our uh two-year review of all the sections. So um at this point, we're getting to the point where I think some of our board members are seeing things, they're reviewing them for multiple times, which is, which is great. Uh, so section two really outlines a lot of the, you know, governance for the board of education. Um, you know, how um, you know, school where elections are, you know, to be conducted, qualifications of board members. Uh, term of office for board members, um, filling vacancies on uh go forward. And then our our board member oath, um, and that's in two eight zero. I'm going to do this quickly. Hopefully you've been able to um, you know, read through this. Um, and also that the board will conduct self-evaluations. Um, that's in policy nine zero. So we've got maybe this one about highlights. Does in two one one zero qualification terms and duties of board officers. And you could see, you know, how that is outlined president, the vice president, um, secretary, treasurer. And then also two one two zero board member development. And uh the board member, oh, covers the board member training that is required for all board members. Um, and I know that um for new board members when they came aboard, Carol Scodin, through all of what required board member training. Um, that information was also posted on our website that board members have completed the training. Um, you know, one of them including para, which is a performance evaluation reform act. Um, and that has to do with evaluation of teachers. And if you were ever, um, you know, board members need to participate in para, if you're ever to participate in a vote on a tender teacher's dismissal. Um, it's also important to know, you know, kind of the the what para is and the implementation of evaluation for teachers. And those are the ones that I really kind of wanted to highlight. Any questions on section two?
I had a few questions. In this section about the meeting type, which is two point two oh oh type of board meetings. It doesn't, there's, we had no description for our committee meetings. And um, as regular meetings, uh closed meetings. Reconvening, special meetings, emergency meetings. But because so much of the meaningful discussion and dialogue that we have takes place at our committee meetings. I thought this might be an opportunity to potentially fill that gap. That was one question I had. People's interest in potentially adding that category. So the public clearly understands what those are, uh, things like that. The second one question for the board was um, the policy where it talks about doing self-evaluation and there's no time to demonstrate that policy. And I think that most boards try to hold themselves accountable to at least every other year, if not every year of some valuation. And so I, again, just in terms of thinking about good, of the governance and something like that. We'd want the board to consider potentially that at the time, strange. I think those are both um, good suggestions. Wondering what the group, let's start with the first suggestion about including um, worrying about our committee meetings. There's a, um, what is it, two, two fifteen?
Two one five oh.
Two one five oh, uh. That there is a little form about the special board committees, but it doesn't really go into the details. It says program and personnel, employees and finance. Property negotiations, et cetera. Did we want to try and put some words to that? Is that? Well, I think this is defining membership, where the other policy is defining
types of meetings.
What what happens at those meetings.
Okay, yeah.
I think they they complement each other. So much of the discussion happens in our committee meetings that it would seem to, but
There is a place that talks about committees in general.
Two one five oh.
Right, that's what we're looking. Sorry, I wasn't there yet.
That was the third question that I had had actually was the list of committees here. Um, they may not have been updated. And right now we have three active committees, P and P, F and F, and negotiations. And some of the other ones listed there, we really don't have or haven't had in my knowledge. So I think that would be one other question for the board. Is that something that we annually want to say when we're doing committee assignments? Are these the committees that we want to move forward with? Is there any other kind of committee that we would want to consider organizing around?
I mean, I would be in favor of updating uh two one five zero, um, to reflect the actual committees that we have because property number three is always rolled into P and P. No, I'm sorry, it's F and F. My apologies into F and F. Um, and I am also, although I'm interested in the idea, I I'm not aware either of us having number five, the parent teacher advisory committee, although we certainly do have parents and teachers involved in um surveys and projects. Um when we're looking at things, the strategic plan is a perfect example of that. Not that we don't have parents and teachers, but that that specific committee, I'm not aware that that has stood in a very, at least since twenty eighteen.
I mean, just this safety committee about parents and students. I thought I recalled the one law recommending student participation on the safety committee and parent. It's a mission.
Parents on the safety, but I don't think students often look that up.
Is it, if a law, if the law does require us to have parents sitting on committees, I think I'd want those to be allocated or to any thing that again, as a checklist for us to make sure who are the parents this year, who are serving on this committee. We also have a behavioral interventions committee listed in this board policy two one fifty. And I'm not aware that that's something that stands presently either.
Yeah, I have to do some research on uh what is required, what needs to be in there, so.
So that was the first thing you mentioned about committees. And then the committee meetings, having a description of committee meetings in terms of what what their purposes, yeah.
Is everybody in agreement that we should look at some news to add that?
Yeah. Then the third thing was considering um an accountability for um board self-assessment. Uh, when especially with the new tools now that IASB has and other things, it doesn't have to be a long drawn out process. It can be simple. But I just wanted to note that I thought we would do it if the policy requires however frequently you want to do it.
It, would anybody be interested or object to changing that wording to annually? I think it is our goal to have a board retreat annually and including some form of self-evaluation in that annual retreat. Um, I think instills some greater accountability. What does everybody think about that?
I would be in favor of adding annually. I think it's commonplace.
And I I think, you know, this board has started doing that. It's it's consistent with what we're doing. We just don't have the policy to back it up. And I think that's where it should probably start and then you know, our good work will be following our policy. And then, uh, you know, our good work will be following our policy as, as opposed to our good work. Uh, you know, existing outside of our policy.
I think we should go into the handbook that we will develop.
Such a good segue. Uh, are we, Brian, are we ready to move on? Pass to D review for policies?
Yeah, no, I think I have. Those, everything we talked about, so we can look at those. Two, two nine zero, the self-evaluation one, and then looking at, um, reviewing two one five zero on the board.
Oh, we've got one more item before we talk about board protocols and handbook. I got a little ahead of myself.
Girl, we purposely put an agenda together this way. We are all interconnected.
Um, so, yeah, for meeting agenda recommended categories.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start with this. Um, Carol and I, uh, Carol predominantly has been coordinating all of the training for all of us. And really looking at, um, what board docs has as some recommended best practices, as well as looking at the board doc structure at other districts. And one of the things that we noticed um, was when we're trying to put all of the information and make it very visible and transparent to the public on what we're building on. It can be difficult to do that without a for action category. In the past, when we weren't using board docs, we used asterisks, you know, some other ways, but that really is not the, the purpose of board docs is to not have to use asterisks, which then you have to have key for somewhere. And so in looking at many other Board of Education's way of, um, organizing their meetings. Carol and I and others on D L T would recommend that for the August meeting, rather than having it be the categories by what agenda items came from the committee meetings. We would rather take the committee meetings products and put them into either for action or discussion or for information. So that way it's very clear to the public and all of you, which things we're voting on, the actual wording would be there. There's, I know most of our discussion takes place in committee meetings, but there sometimes is timely things that we have to add. And then for the forward information, I thought that could be a place where we shift some of our individual reports, the president's report, superintendent's report. Also potentially in, encouraging each of you, one thing I noticed was most boards have an opportunity for each board member to do a brief report, either I attended this, or I learned this, or I have a question about that. Um, again, just wanting to make sure that as we're using more docs as effectively as possible, we're considering these new practices to get your voice off the public as effectively as possible. So this would affect, and I think we, we did attach an overview of what I'm describing right now.
So it would effectively, um, do what we have done the last couple of meetings, which is put student recognition right at the beginning, then an invitation for public comment, then the student board reports where requests is required by law and good news. Um, the consent agenda would be the first thing we vote on, but I think the notable feature is we would no longer have the structure of P and P committee as this, as its own item on the board agenda, on the regular board meeting agenda. Because all of those items, we can remove into the, to vote, to discuss or for information categories, which I think just makes it more logical. Um, and, you know, I, I agree that having this superintendent's report and president's report. I think a superintendent's report is still very effective, just relocating. And I, I don't think the president's report is necessary. I, I think all the things that were covered in it are logically moved to other places and it it, it eliminates the president discussing those things where they really belong in other categories. And then at the end, if any of us as individuals have something we want to share, we would all have the opportunity to have a report, not just to have, you know, a, a president's report, so.
Did you mean by student recognition? So when you said recognition, are you meant the student representatives?
Also, I meant student recognition first. Yeah, when we've invited, see, for example, um, the debate team has, uh, placed at stake, or we have a diver that has one, uh, sections. We invite them and their parents to the meeting. Um, in the last couple of meetings, you may have noticed, we're trying to have those people recognized first so that if they want to stay for the rest of the meeting, they can, but they're not forced to sit through any other parts of the meeting. Um, then the student board reports would be separate. That is your question?
Student reports happen right after the student recognition.
Yes, my question. Yes, yeah.
I think we had it right after invitation.
Yeah, so, sorry, student recognition, then public comment, then the student work.
Now, did you plan on revealing this while Jim's not here on purpose?
Knowing Jim, he will be delighted to give out that section.
If you're out there.
Yeah.
So just functionally, how do you envision the for action items? Because someone has to call or a motion, right?
So that part would go to the president. Yes, whoever's in that role.
Yeah, that's, I, I'm just functionally trying to interview how that would work. Other question. And we would still at the conclusion of each committee meeting do an audit of, okay, so this is going to the August board meeting for vote, this is going to the August board meeting for discussion. So the committee would still have a little bit of their picture of what's happening next.
And I, I think we'll have the opportunity to continue to tweak it if we implement this. And we realize that a section needs to be moved or reinstated, we certainly have the flexibility to do that. Uh, so we'll, we'll pay attention to how it works and solicit feedback to make sure that we're getting it right.
Makes sense to me. I just always assumed that our agenda was prescribed, like, okay, all school boards, this is what you do.
You know, it seems like, and Brian, you, some of the other longer-serving administrators, um, can comment on this, but it seems like that's the way we've been doing it, so that's the way we do it.
Right.
And let's see if there's a better way, especially one that I think does foster transparency and ease of use for the public. Okay, moving on. Um, item F, board protocols and handbook. Um, we have several different examples of board protocols and handbooks from other districts. The reason why we have started to think about that, uh, we think that we do a good job of new member orientation, but I think we can do a better job of new member orientation, taking some of the feedback that we've received from board members that joined us in twenty twenty one. Um, I think that was really the launch point for thinking, how do we have a manual so that individual board members as well as the public understands how we operate. Uh, we have board policies, but this is, this is a little bit different and it's a little bit richer. Uh, and it allows us to, you know, certainly make it transparent, share with the public, but really try to capture our policies. How does something get on the agenda? I think that's something that, you know, we all, we all kind of know, but I think for our board as well as for future boards, it would be really helpful to have a handle. So, um, Denise actually did a fantastic job of finding some other districts and some wording. Um, and, um, Cara had provided one that's also included from another school district in elementary, I think it, you got it in the, yeah, at the conference, yeah. And
That was very helpful. That's a bold.
That's a bold. And I think there are pieces of each of these that are wonderful. And I think what we're looking for, uh, we have a retreat scheduled at the end of August. And one of the goals of that retreat is to come away with some form of a D one twenty eight handbook. We'd really like to use that time together as effectively as possible. And I think reinventing the wheel might not be necessary. I think taking a look at what we like, what categories we want to include. And just pulling those over so that when we are together, we can talk about those categories, we can talk about the wording we like. We can talk about things that need to be added. It will make our time together much more efficient as opposed to trying to start from scratch and, and actually sit down, you know, trying to write a word for it from the beginning. So, um, if we could, I'd like to just briefly get some thoughts about the handbooks that were provided in your packet. Um, cat things that you liked, things that you didn't like. Um, certainly there were, um, quite a variety. Um, uh, categories, uh, and these are all, um, available to the public as well in board docs.
I like the top ten reasons to become a school board member about.
Was that the I S B?
Thirteen, uh, district, that one, yes, school district thirteen.
Okay.
Kidding aside, I like the collegial way that one gets written.
Yeah.
It's very welcoming. It's very it's very motivating, um, you know, talking about some of the legal stuff in non, kind of intimidating ways. And very user-friendly of, these are, these are the things you need to know. These are the resources you have, if you have questions. I, I particularly like that one, but I do like the top ten reasons to be.
I have a good authority from the presenter that we're allowed to steal it. Okay.
So the, and I, I will mention that the only ones that we included were ones that were either provided publicly or they live on their website. So we didn't, uh, include anything in our packet that isn't available to the public.
Well, you can tell that some of them took the house awards work from I A S B. And either put it into their own words, because obviously that's a governing authority and you, you want to make it as efficient as possible, but changing some of the, the verbiage to make it, like I said, a little more collegial, a little better to understand, um. I like, I, I like the, the way that they handle it.
I did think that was a bit long, though. Most of them tend to be a little bit shorter, so.
I have to say, though, it's very instructive. As a new member.
Yeah.
Not coming onto this side of the table for the first time, I thought it was not overwhelming. Uh, it was an easy when you were able to, uh, I look at more of it.
Was approachable.
Like something you can go back to.
So thorough enough.
Right, and a one-stop shop where, yes, you can go to the I A S B information, certainly. Uh, but someplace, because when I joined, we had to kind of gather our own tools a little bit. And then cross-reference, like, did this one say the same thing this one did? I do like the idea of a one-stop shop that, that kind of brings everybody together.
Would you suggest that when we meet at the retreat, we kind of have our list of absolute adds, absolute deletes, questionable, and kind of get an idea and start from there?
I, I think that's an excellent idea. I think we wanted to sort of set the stage with these, uh, three different examples. And then come together really ready to talk about, these are the sections I really want to see included. I don't think this needs to be here, it's already in our policies, or this is really what's missing, uh, or, um, you know, Dan gave me great information. I think some reference to that needs to be in, you know, whatever might be missing in your mind from the experience that you might have had, um, as a member. Whether it was that, that, you know, wherever that experience might have taken place, um, let's come together, you know, prepared to talk about that.
And I think uh, identifying the ones that we think are important. I think we have a lot of consistency in that, I think, and then saying, and we all agree with the proposed language, it will be, we think it's important, but we have different targets on the language. And this will give us time to then really roll up our sleeves and have conversations about how working group, we do want to navigate that particular topic.
Yeah, I thought there were some sort of fundamental concepts you should know, and then some were how do you apply them, like? What should you do during the meeting? Like, I second, I sometimes forget the words. I know what I have to say, but those words don't come out right. So sometimes I almost want to write it on a post-it note and read that myself, right? So I think we have, don't use the word I and just your. We have to, uh,
Say our names.
Say our names, uh, in first person, so. I think those types, maybe we have to think about how you organize that way too. It's something I can use every day versus stuff I need to absorb and know, right?
And I like the idea of living in board docs so that while we're in a meeting, if we do have a question, or if somebody maybe doesn't remember how to do something, or you know, someone, say, for example, um, one of the categories that I saw several times was asking administrators for reports. So if I ask for something, and we all know we've agreed that that's not how it's going to work, any one of the six of you could pull up, you know, in board docs, our protocols and say, well, what we agreed to is two of us have to agree, or you have to request it from the superintendent, because it's their job to monitor the workload for their uh, district leadership team. Uh, I think the, the ability to attach it in board docs makes it really user-friendly for whatever it is we might need to refer to.
It's funny, is that something that we've not needed? That specific example, this group has not needed. Um, yeah, I can see so many situations where an unregulated request could be burdensome.
And it, it could be very well intentioned.
Sure.
But I think having procedures around things like that will really make it easy for everybody to be operating the same way.
And come up to speed faster. There's a big learning for this stuff.
Big job, big learning, yeah.
Anything we can do to help new members come up to speed faster and be effective more quickly is going to benefit the attending. So I think this is important.
It hadn't been for Lisa's suggestion to read the artist's boarding, I would have been clueless when I first got up here. And I felt clueless anyway, but at least that gave me some onboarding skills.
Right. Do you think it, I, I really thought, let me know, was a really easy, approachable read. But also not as, uh, not aligned with a high school district. Well, and that's, there are a lot of high school district things that come up that were not in that hand, but.
Well, that's why I really liked the San Juan. If you had a chance to read that one, that one seemed a little bit more geared towards our, uh, district in, in that way. Because I think thirteen is great, but it is more elementary, and I thought San Juan.
I still liked the language, just to take some of that, like, but, uh, would it be worth it to go to our attorney's office? Do you think they would have an example of other things that should absolutely be in a member handbook for a high school? Is it worth asking?
Yeah.
Instead of reinventing the wheel, and they've obviously had to go through these before.
I think perhaps in addition to, um, you know, creating a handbook. Um, even though, I don't know, I mean, maybe, maybe board would agree at this point, that just kind of handing over a copy of the art of school boarding is a really useful thing to do in, in the process of onboarding new board members. I mean, that's been my go-to, you know, primer for the last year class. And it's, not only is it just so comprehensive and full of real-life examples, um, but, you know, I don't know, it's just, it's just very straightforward. It's an unintimidating text, and I think it distills down what you need to know in under a hundred and fifty pages. So coupling that handbook piece with perhaps this, you know, really, um, useful piece of reading. And it's just, I think it's also just, um, it sets the tone for the board's culture as well, when you're all on the same page with that part of school boarding piece, and I think it's just, you're all speaking the same language at a point, right?
Right. Well, one of the things that we can discuss at our retreat is we can review the set of manuals that we provide to every new board member. Um, and consider, if we all agree, adding that one to the, uh, the new member package. Um, I'm sure Jim Berzat would be happy. Uh as the author to know um that we're including his his good work in our onboarding process.
I like that they had the list of acronyms, but I'd like to add a list of like. Doms, like, there's so many things that, like, come from daddy's presentations that I don't remember. The actual dorm. Of these men and, you know.
I liked the glossary too.
So. Maybe some of those terms, what do they mean, like, if if part or access, what is that?
And because it will live digitally, you know, adding to the glossary as we go is probably a good idea.
Or probably keep it a separate document on acronym separate, glossary of terms separate and just length so they can be.
Well, we are, we are set up to have a rich discussion. Anything else before we move on from board protocols and handbook? Turn it over to you for the D one twenty culture care comprehensive plan update.
Brian did a wonderful job taking all of the end of year documents and applying some of the updates that's. Taking place at I S V E and prepare you the draft plan, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, um so obviously we had a cultural care comprehensive plan in place. Uh last year, um there's been a lot of changes since last year, um so the document is. Has changed significantly from what we had in place last year, but we also did. Um try to refer to or keep some things that were referred to in the document so that people understood that they just weren't forgotten or or lost. But just kind of walking through it, but our uh framework really follows um. What the CDC started last February, and that was presented at one of our board meetings with the community uh levels. Um and everything is based off of that framework. Um so the the community levels that are broken down, um and those again are determined from. Um the COVID uh admissions um and the inpatient beds. Um and and that kind of gives that low, medium and high, and so I try to include. How those COVID community levels were created from the CDC. So this is, you know, directly from the CDC, and then how once those community levels are broken down to low, medium, high. You have your two prevention strategies for masking and for testing, again, this was last February. Um and that's kind of what we ended the school year on, but this leads into, uh you know, this uh school year. So this guidance then, so ISB then really um shortened their guidance and took it from a lot of different. You know, it was a much, I think, um. Robust guidance and they really pared it down to be in line with the CDC community levels and then the CDC. Um school guidance. Um some of the, you know, highlights that they just kind of want to go over, um again, you know, we'll be looking at. Um the, you know, pay, having people screen themselves at home. And if they're having symptoms to, you're not coming to school. Um and they can do take home tests, um you know, and follow up with our nurses if they have any questions. We will not be um, you know, doing any uh required testing of our students. Um they can however have point of care testing with our nurses if they have questions when they come to school. There will be weekly COVID testing for our staff that are not fully vaccinated. And vaccinated staff can still voluntarily test. We're still going through the Shield Illinois program, which is using the saliva test, so that'll be done once O B. Um and again, you know, Shield is offering that to all public schools um free of cost. Again, provided that, you know, we're meeting the numbers um. That they have set forth, will be worked with passport house health on those weekly um tests. Some of the other. Things that for the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three school year. ISB is still uh requiring that remote learning is available to those students. That are not able to come into school due to COVID, so that will still be in place, so our. Um you know, procedures that we had in place before that teachers will be notified. And then teachers will set up a, you know, Google Meet or Zoom um for the the students to be able to access uh the classroom. Some of the other things, again, we'll still have some of the building considerations. We're still going to encourage people to wash their hands, um you know, clean the classrooms every day. Um and um. You know, that's really about. You know, the, I think, all of it. I don't know if there are any questions about anything.
Did you say that we had to be in a contract for the continued testing or just using free shield now?
So we are, so we are working with Shield and Passport Health, so Shield um. A-again, i- it's free of charge, um Passport Har- Passport Health is our third party vendor. Through Shield, so we're not paying Passport, it's all through, uh you know, free, so. Rather than us having our nurses or people collect any of that passport is doing all that collection for us. Um there are limits on the number of, we have to have certain numbers of people test weekly. We are kind of right on that pust. Uh you know, the numbers, if they don't want to come into a school and only pass, you know, uh five people and then leave, they have to. Show that, you know, the uh time being put in, so. Well, I'll have to monitor that after the first couple of weeks, I've talked to Passport, I've talked to Shield. I don't know what our numbers are, and like I said, we're right at that, I will have to reevaluate. They come in for very minimum times, so they're only here for just a little over an hour at. One school, they're available, and then after they're done that same day. And the the staff that are required to test, again, that's still a requirement um. Um under um the executive order from the governor that we're testing and vaccinated staff.
So we don't beat the number, then we would have to pay.
So then we have to start looking, yes, you know, there may be costs involved, or we're um doing uh self-collection where. People are given uh vials and then they collect, they drop them off, so we need those, you know. So then um kind of, you know, moving forward, we, you know, will want to share this information, you know, with our staff. And then we'll also want to share that, you know, our parents and students uh will be at the school, so. And uh that's right on the corner, but we'll want to send that that information here, so. Any other question?
Okay, so just to be clear. If we are in high transmission. Masking should be promoted per CDC guidance. So promoted means recommended. And we would have masks available, I would assume, for anybody who wants one who doesn't have one.
Yeah, so we'll have masks available, you know, as the school year starts at all of our entrances and stuff, just like we did before. Obviously, we get into high transmission, we'll make sure that we do have, you know, masks still available for anyone, and. Um we will promote it, but nothing will be required.
Correct, great, and as you said, um you're not collecting vaccination data from students any longer.
We are not, no.
So um testing is not required for participation in extracurriculars.
It is not.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to be sure we were explicit with. A couple of those things that um I know there were some parents that were um asking about those things specifically. Okay? Any other comments before we we move on to future agenda items? Okay? Future agenda items.
Um next month, we will be, next month, we will be bringing um. Update for different data for the Equity and Inclusion Plan. Um so that will be an opportunity for some of our new staff to also have the first board presentation, so. Again, how we similarly provided data and metrics. At the April board meeting, it will be other kinds of factors that we're trying to keep people updated on to show progress towards our goals.
Any other future agenda items? That we want to discuss for our next meeting? Okay, very done, um then I am going to adjourn the um P and P meeting. At six fifty-two. Quick break before F and F or should we roll into F and F?
All right, call the order of the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting for Monday, July twenty-fifth. We've already handled the pledge. Invitation for public comment, is there anyone present that wishes to submit public comment? All right, moving on, um review of the F and F committee meeting, uh minutes from June twentieth, any comments or questions? All right, um moving on to Bill's payable report. Any comments or questions, I know I, Dan and I talked about the uh. I had a question about the permit number. But as Dan explained. Dollar now.
Okay, I didn't too.
Yeah, we get that back. Which you'd think I would know, having done a lot of home renovations within the village of Libertyville, how that works. But I saw the number and.
Well, it's a good question, I mean, there are things in the educational world that work very differently from personal finance or corporate finance, so it's a, an excellent question.
Yeah, so, um, any other comments about those payable, this will be part of the consent agenda in the. Regular board meeting, which will also happen tonight. Dan, did you have any comments? All right then, moving on, capital project, summer is our uh. Our time for the facilities to get their shine and polish, because the students are not in, so it's. It's busy for you. Tell us about what's going on.
Um well, I give a, I give a summary um of projects. The library windows, those were delivered today, installation will start tomorrow. Um so everything was prepped on there. Auditorium of wall repairs, uh we're on time for that project, um we finish soon. Roof repairs, it's just the one small section of roof above the doorway. Um and then some uh. Metal flashing work that will be completed. Basement repairs are ongoing and and are scheduled for to be completed, you know, August sixth. And then uh. Uh tax remodeling, uh working with the contractor on their final. Uh timing of uh the project, we're behind on that one. Um but the school has already worked out a game plan for a plan B if we cannot use uh those rooms to the beginning of school. Um so. Move forward that and transition build out is mov- moving along, um some setbacks with. Unforeseen conditions, you know, underneath the floor and things in some plumbing pipes and stuff, but. We've gotten through that and we're moving on and stud walls are going up and. Uh plumbing, you know, plumbing's in, roughed in, and electrical work's going on, so. Pretty exciting.
Like I said, busy. We appreciate all the work you and your team put in during the summer to get the buildings ready for another school year.
When do we think that'll be ready now?
I mean.
When will it be ready?
The transition.
Yeah.
Uh right now, uh we're looking at the beginning of October.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a, an update on that, so obviously transition pathways is starting in August. We do have a contingency plan and thank thankfully with the village of uh Vernon Hills. We are utilizing the Sullivan Center during that time for our transition pathway, so they're starting some stuff um with our staff at the district office. In our c- uh conference rooms, but then also with the Sullivan Center, so, you know, I just want to thank Village of Vernon Hills and the partnership. That we're able to start that program and have space for our students moving forward, so.
Yes, very appreciative.
One other thing with the transition program is that may be. A good place to take a look at, um you know, we'd usually, usually after we do a big project kind of tour the space, maybe there's an opportunity to do that once it's completed in the fall. Logistically, I'm not sure, because usually the projects we do are at one of the two high schools, and we just usually have a meeting there and just walk over. This would be a little bit different, so we'd have to. Figure out some of those logistics, but, you know, that's something to do, that I think would be well worth your time uh in the fall.
We would like that.
I'm just kind of going by memory here and wanted to call this out, that the V H H S library windows. I think these were like the more energy efficient kind of windows.
Well, the other windows weren't, had no efficiency, so. They are more energy efficient in that they have some value, but yeah, they're, they're more, certainly more energy efficient than the piece of plastic that was there before.
Any other questions or comments? Moving on to future agenda items. You know, Dan, we had. Policy. Question you wanted to add.
Waited until I put something in my mouth, huh?
Future agenda items, dumb it.
Charlotte, can I show that you finished chewing? Yeah?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just so we talked briefly, uh capital project. The protocols for that are prior, how to prioritize that, that's coming at a future one. There was another one. Thought we had another one, Denise, did we talk about another one today?
Or my, my. Talked about the protocols using for the board to establish capital outlay priorities.
Yes.
And then we also talked about related to it, but different would be the policy on fund balance.
Thank you, unbalanced policy as well.
Right.
All right, knew it, so.
Okay, so uh along with board policy for seventy research, uh resource conservation. I am interested in coming up with a more comprehensive district, district wide waste management plan. So that we are diverting waste from the solid waste that's intended for the landfill. Uh as opposed to the solid waste that goes to recycling. I know that we have a. A a plan in motion right now where bins are distributed around the building. Students actually carry those bins or transport them somehow. I I would like to see a. A more comprehensive infrastructure, perhaps to the point of installing. Uh compactors for. Uh recyclable materials. Um I know that we are charged, I should say, I suspect that we are charged, because I don't know exactly what our contract is with our waste management. It costs more to. Take solid waste that's intended for the landfill away than it does to take away waste that is intended for the recycling center. Back at the time where I was researching this some time ago. It was three hundred and fifty dollars plus mileage plus tonnage to take solid waste away, but it was a flat fee of a hundred and fifty dollars to take solid waste away. It was going to the recycling center. So over time, you're saving money by diverting waste to recycling. Um and if there's an infrastructure for that, it helps us to push that fifty percent reduction forward. I would like to see that become a more permanent reduction plan that meets at some cap. Because, of course, you get diminishing returns if you do fifty percent every year. Uh eventually, you're going to get at that flat part of the curve where it doesn't make any sense to even try to. Um but I would like to see that policy perhaps changed in a way that would accommodate a a robust plan. But I would like to see that policy perhaps changed in a way that would accommodate a, a robust plan for recycling, but that has some sort of terminal point and maybe investigate how we structure collection of, of recyclables in the building. Uh, I would love to see that become a student project where they do the research and then present to us rather than us do it. Uh, just because I know it's a doable project and that we have, uh, incredibly talented kids. But that's just a, wouldn't it be nice if the education system, like we were actually doing the real world stuff at the same time as we were teaching the math and whatnot. So, uh, a future agenda item would be to discuss that in more detail.
Don, just make sure I'm hearing you right. You, you're interested in a, a future done item to discuss like a comprehensive plan. But also I heard you mentioning like updating the policy.
Correct, so.
Is it both then?
Things, yeah.
Two different, two different things.
Right, so one thing happens in F and F and one thing happens in P and P. Because building infrastructure into the building would definitely be an F and F concern, but the thing driving it would be policy. And then it also, another agenda item, just a, a brief update on what's going on with V Turk. I'm assuming that they've gotten back to us and we've heard from
With who, sorry?
With the Vernon Township Energy Resiliency Commission.
Ferregy?
And did Ferregy get back to us? So we don't have to talk about that now, but I would like to find out where that is.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that.
Keep stealing people's stuff. I apologize.
No, I'm glad that you brought that up.
No, loser.
Because we were spearheading that for us and, you know, for a while have really been our sustainability driver on the board. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, uh, not a future agenda item, but just note, um, the location for our next meeting in August. It will be a committee meeting and it will be here. But the board meeting will be back at Vernon Hills High School at the end of August, just as a friendly note to my colleagues as well as the public who may want to join us.
This may be a record. But journey, uh, were we at ten minutes? Journeying F and F at seven o'clock.
Well done.
Yep.
Casey Rooney, she's driving it.
Yeah.
So now do we want to do a five-minute?
Sure.
Bio break? Being late, we, we had our committee meetings. Um, so if I could ask for a roll call, I'm sorry, uh, we've already done the pledge of allegiance at five thirty when we started our committee meetings, so we are not going to repeat that. I'll just ask for the roll call, please.
Jim Batson. Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Kara Drunkie. So. Lisa Hessel.
Here.
So now, Paul Carney.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, we note that Jim Batson is absent. Uh, Kara Drunkie is momentarily out of the room and will be joining us shortly. Um, so we will review the agenda. Um, first up, we will have a public hearing of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. Uh, then we will have communication where we ask for public comment, cover the four requests and have, share some good news. Um, the president's report, do we have any student recognition for tonight? We do not, so we will be skipping over item four and going straight to Dr. Herman's report, uh, that includes a strategic plan update. Um, the consent vote agenda includes things that we, uh, normally have, um, uh, regular business of the board things, um, that we have discussed that we regularly make a part of the consent vote. Um, then we will, um, have our, uh, program and personnel committee review. Uh, we have a first reading of some policies. Uh, we do have a resolution as well as an intergovernmental agreement, both of which will be voting on. For the facilities and finance committee, we will be voting to adopt the fiscally, we will not be. We will mention the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget and there will not be a vote. Um, more to follow. Um, for reports, um, we will have a, uh, brief mention, uh, for the, uh, Illinois Association of School Boards, ISB. Um, do we have anything for CEDOL? Great, so we will have updates on both of those things. We'll discuss future agenda items. We will adjourn to executive discussion, um, to discuss employment of an employee as well as collective bargaining matters. No action will be taken when we return to open session other than to adjourn. So getting us started, first up, we have our public hearing of the fiscal year twenty-three budget. And I will declare the hearing open. Um, I invite any members of the public wishing to comment, um, to please do so now. Going once. Seeing no one here for public comment, um, Dan, the floor is yours.
One second, let me just. We good? Hello, everyone. Um, so this is the legal budget hearing, uh, that's required, uh, by the state of Illinois, uh, before a budget can be legally adopted, you have to have a budget hearing. You can have a budget adoption the same night as you have the hearing. Uh, but you can't adopt it before you have the hearing. Uh, as Lisa mentioned, uh, we do have the agenda of for adoption on the agenda tonight. Um, however, we are not going to be in a position to approving the final budget tonight. We will have that at, um, the August eighth, the committee meeting, we're gonna make that into a special meeting to adopt it then. Uh, so stay tuned. Uh, we just weren't able to get some numbers finalized for today.
And that still gives us plenty of time in our annual cycle.
Uh, for sure. To- tonight would have been the earliest we, I don't want to say ever, because I don't really know, but those
But it's still.
earliest in a very long time that we have ever adopted a budget.
Right.
Uh, but by golly, next year. So.
We're still very well on, uh, track for, for a very good timeline, so I didn't want there to be any, um, misunderstanding that not a pretty, tonight was somehow putting us behind schedule in any way.
All right, um, so this will be similar, uh, although much more pared down to the presentation that we did in June, uh, but much less information. It's really more updated numbers. Um, very similar to a report I sent to board. So, so just to review real quick for contextualization, so fiscal year twenty-two, which is, you know, last fiscal year. Um, what I want to show you is we had a surplus, um, in the budget of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Now, that's not how the year ended up because there's more that goes into that, but our, our budget in terms of an operating stance had three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, so it's a very, very close, uh, margin. So now a review of the updated tentative budget. Um, I'm gonna be focusing on operating funds here that we've talked many times about, so hopefully you're very familiar with operating funds. That's all of our funds except I take out capital projects and I take out debt service. We don't have any debt service, so I take out zero for that and for capital projects, I take that out because those are really very high fluctuating numbers depending on what major projects we have. So those of you who have been around for a while, we sometimes had twenty million dollars a year for the pool or whatever project we were doing. Uh, this year, really our project is the transition program, um, which is a two million dollar program. So that, that line varies greatly, so we kind of remove that as an outlier because it really is a true sight for you to see in terms of how this district really does run on a year-to-year basis. Um, however, we still do have a capital projects funding and you need to know what's in them. Two million dollars for the transition program, uh, that we know, uh, is in there. Um, and then what I have is a placeholder of five hundred thousand dollars for the start of some undetermined project that would start summer of next summer. So we would have design cost, stuff like that. We don't have that project identified right now. Um, but we usually run into, we're gonna look into doing a large project, this is money to start. So, um, what, so here is almost like the highest level I can show you of our system and our budget. So the revenues is divided by the different funds we have. And then it's divided by revenues and then expenditures and then the different objects, their salaries, their benefits, that, those are just the numbers. Uh, and so really. And so really the takeaway to see is the total budget is a hundred million on the expenditure side with a total deficit of four point three million. That includes capital projects and then the operating funds. Oh, sorry, the operating funds would show a deficit of one point eight million. So the total being a deficit is misleading because like, wow, we're overspending by four point three million. Technically, we are, but we're using fund balance to pay for a project. For the last several years, we've had a fund balance, we've, sorry, we've had a total budget deficit. Because we've been spending cash on these massive projects that we've been doing.
Do you mind repeating that last part about why we have that? Surplus or deficit? Because I, I think it's clear, you went over it pretty quickly. Do you mind just repeating that one piece?
Yeah, the four point three million, the reason that exists is because it starts with whatever your operating surplus or deficit is. And then it is either mitigated some or enhanced by capital projects that you're doing. And so the way that we have paid for our capital projects have not been by additional taxing of your community. It's using basically the money that's in the bank to pay for that. And so because it's not, there's no revenue, it's already in our bank. Use, the expenditure shows the money coming out, but there's no money coming in to offset it. The money is already here. So, but on the operating side, there is a deficit of one point eight million dollars in. In the, in the fiscal year twenty-three tentative budget, this version. It's a little bit different than the previous version, but I sent you information about where some of the assumed changes that would have made that change. But those are all. Those are all reasonable, I would say. This was an expected deficit. You never, normally you would never want to see a deficit in your operating funds. A deficit year over year, that's spending more money than you're taking in that year. So think of you personally, if you spend everything about monthly, right? Most people live monthly, right? If you spent more money every month than you take in every month, eventually you're going to run into a big problem. You're going to run out of money. And then you have to figure out what to do. No different than a giant organization like this where if we constantly had a deficit, we're spending more than we're taking in. Eventually you run out of money and then you have big problems. We saw this coming primarily because of our projecting. And the change in accounting that we did for our property taxes, that now they're aligned. So not one year has going to have multiple CPIs. It's one CPI for one year, which is going to be much more simple, simple to budget for, simple to explain, simple to understand, I think. That said, the biggest reason for this is what you will see, revenues are not increasing as fast as expenditures for next. Expenditures are going to increase at a higher rates than revenues. And that's what's causing this, but we do anticipate this to be a one-year issue. After, after this year, we believe it'll go back to being a positive number. So this is again a summary sheet that you already have on revenues. What I would point out is total revenues going up about one point one seven percent. But that is a bit misleading because that includes removing food service. So right, we talked about Quest is coming in, we're very excited about Quest. We approved that contract at the last board meeting, right? And so we're very excited about that. And with that, we're not going to get the money in anymore from lunchrooms. It's going to go to Quest because Quest is going to manage that program. So that one point two million dollars has been removed as a revenue. So it, so it looks like revenues are only going up one point seven, one point one seven. And I'm saying that's not truly what's happening. What's truly happening is it's closer to our revenues going up two point three six, so call it two point four. Which? The bulk of our revenues come from property taxes, so the biggest driver in property taxes is whatever CPI is. The CPI, so all of you are very aware of inflation, right? Inflation being eight, nine percent, right? You kind of hear it every month. The CPI that we are able to access for property taxes is based on December of twenty twenty-two, based on December of twenty twenty-one. Which that was a one point four CPI. So what I'm saying is next year, the revenue we will receive will go up by one point four percent in property taxes. Now, new property that's brand new, that will get added on top, that's a different thing. And that, that's added in, so that's actually there and you see my number instead of one point four, it'll be one point seven. So it's, it's a little bit more money, but not a lot. And then there's a few other things happening. So since the last version, what I've updated here, I believe was CPPRT. I updated to add another hundred thousand to that. We've talked several times about CPPRT, we had a very large CPPRT this year, which is absolutely an outlier. We've never received anywhere near that much money before. And no one knows what we will get next year. I'm telling you, no one knows. If they say they know, they're not being accurate. It's, it's honestly a guess. So I'm budgeting for the second highest CPPRT that we will have ever received, but we honestly don't know. So, but I'm, I'm leaning more towards it's going to be somewhere in the middle between what we got last year and what we usually would get. I'm kind of somewhere in the middle between there. That's really the only update since the last version of what you saw from this. So revenue is going to have two point three percent. On the expenditure side, so a lot of numbers, I'm sorry, I didn't circle, circle the right ones that I wanted you to see. This is also in the report for you, so this is showing a four-year trend of salaries and benefits and then the budget. This is all funds, so this is, this is going to match the other one. But the question is, all right, what are the numbers? Then the question is, how did the numbers change? Right, so what are the numbers and then how did they change? This is trying to give you a first chance of here's the numbers and then the next tab, I'm going to show you is how, well, this is all funds. But again, I'm going to focus on operating funds, so this is all funds combined, so you can see. But then I'm going to switch it now to operating. Okay, so now this is operating funds, what our expenditures are, budgeted, what the actuals have been, everything like that. But really what matters is how they're changing. So this next slide is, is really my last slide that I really want to show you what's happening. So there's a couple of things happening here. So the first area. There you can see, if you can see my mouse there, is the first category of analysis that I have here is what was the, what? What was the percentage of fiscal twenty-two was actually spent versus budgeted? And I think it's really exciting, salaries and benefits came in at ninety-nine point six five percent of budget, which is really hard to do. And so the system we had worked great for that. We had some things come in a lot, you know, there's more detail in other reports, there's some things that came in higher than we thought. Substitutes, for example, crazy higher, some things coming in under, but the, the net, net of it all working out was extremely tight. Other expenditures, which would be more like our department budgets, that supplies, services, tuition, those kinds of things. Those came in under budget at ninety, call it ninety-four percent. And that's the thing that we're getting much tighter on next year that's being reflected. So I think those are, those are all, that's all really great news. Then if you look at the next column, budget change, so how is the budget changing? This is really where the real numbers are. This includes, sorry, it's hard to see because the written report will give you more information. This report right here, four, three point four three percent, that is the actual change in operating expenditures. However, that includes food service being removed. No, that includes food service in, so it's artificially lowering the increase. If I remove food service from the equation, the true increase right now is at a four point seven. That's when I remove food service, but, but for you to see past that and see what's really happening on the salaries and benefits, that budget change, six point seven two. That's budgeted. Everything else, like truly, is like really, really close to flat. And that was a lot of the discussions that we've, we've been having as the part with departments, as a DLT, we've been walking through these numbers. Now, some of these numbers will change for the final version of the budget, but at least this was the tentative budget that I sent to you earlier this month. So the total net, net change truly of four point seven seven. So that's where we're at with. With estimates for the budget and that's then also the change in actuals, you can see there as well. A big, a big thing to know is, you know, this is, this has got assumptions in there. It's got also the new staffing that we've talked about, like our new administrators, the additional teachers that we're having, bringing in the transition program. So those are additional staffing, that's all part of that too. So all of those things are baked in, there's a lot of numbers that go into these numbers, right? In addition to that, or will include, what's included in here is the contingency that we've talked about, but I've updated the contingencies. So we have really two contingencies, one is a hundred thousand dollar contingency for strategic planning. So that is doing something in response to a strategic plan. So that is unknown right now, like we have an adopted strategic plan framework, right? And then we're going to develop more specific action steps, but because we don't know what those are right now and we don't know how much those cost, we didn't want to wait. A whole nother year before implementing anything, so we stuck a hundred thousand as just a guess, to, to be honest, we don't know. To be able to start something this year. Secondly, because the other expenditures are basically flats, we've had a lot of really good conversations. And I am budgeting some things tighter than I would normally feel comfortable doing. And I've seen enough of them over the, all of our district line items, that's. Having a contingency set aside in case I'm wrong on some of these things, or in case something else comes up, I think is going to be extremely helpful in us navigating this next year. So that, that contingency I increased from a hundred thousand to a hundred fifty thousand after I completed all of my conversations with departments. So we have a hundred fifty thousand contingency, which, to be honest, on, on a ninety-seven million dollar budget is not a, not a lot of money. I mean, a hundred thousand is a lot of money for sure, but like relative to ninety-seven million dollars, it's very small. But I think that gives me enough comfort and flexibility.
So you mentioned two different contingencies and I just want to be sure I'm clear. So. Can you tell me what two categories the contingency amount falls into?
Yep, the first category is strategic planning.
Yes.
One hundred thousand for that. The other is a hundred fifty thousand for general operating contingency.
And is there a placeholder for? A five-year capital maintenance plan anywhere built in?
And. You mean a placeholder, I'm not sure I understand the last thing you're asking me.
So we haven't fully developed the capital maintenance plan. So there wouldn't be a specific dollar value. So I'm wondering if there is, just like there is earmarked for the other categories, is there somewhere that's also earmarked for potential future expenses related to that capital maintenance plan?
Yes, there is. There is, I, I'm not calling it a contingency because it's a little, it's a difference, slightly different in my mind. The bulk of the capital projects that we have in this budget, we've talked about a while ago and they're, they're all happening right now. Those summer projects that he updated with, you have a committee meeting. The one thing that is in here is the five hundred, five hundred thousand. So the thing that's like not very specific is five hundred thousand dollars for an undetermined project starting summer twenty twenty-three. But that's not operating, that's part of the total. So like it's not in the operating budget, it's a separate thing.
Thank you.
So. Yeah, so that's where we're at with our tentative budget. Right now, so.
Okay, questions? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to declare the budget hearing for the fiscal year twenty-three budget closed. And we will move on to communication. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the board? Okay, seeing none, do we have any email public comments? We do not. Okay, moving on to FOIA requests, please.
This month, we received one FOIA and that was from Paul Phillips from Public Data Research requesting copies of all D one twenty-eight employee. First name, last name, and mailing information. It was, it was completed on the same day and we spent fifteen minutes.
Great, thank you. Moving on to good news.
We also have some great things happening in the district, even though school is not in session. D one twenty-eight students and staff are doing great things. Members of the Vernon Hills FBLA team competed at the FBLA National Leadership Conference in competition that was held locally here in Chicago, June twenty-ninth to July second. The following students placed nationally in their respective competitions. Kandar Basia and Ruhi Sabramian placed second in Intro to Business Presentation. Pranav Swathmuthian, Anthony Smith, Kalaf and Gavin Mavagaskam placed third in Hospitality and Event Management. Andrew Tikunoff placed eighth in Personal Finance Objective Test. And Brandon Newman, Joel Kim and Andru Adiro placed eighth in Entrepreneurship. VHS Special Services Teacher Danielle Robner has been chosen to receive an Illinois Teacher of the Year Award for Meritous Service. From the Illinois State Board of Education. Her award will be celebrated at Those Who Excel and Teacher of the Year Banquet on August sixth at the Bloomington Normal Marriott Hotel Convention Center. And lastly, D one twenty-eight received a letter of thanks from the Vernon Village of Vernon Hills for its support for the Vernon Hills July fourth celebration. This year's D one, one twenty-eight was able to support the celebration by providing housing arrangements for the award-winning Colts and Colt Cadet Drum and Bugle Corps from Dubuque, Iowa. Which included a hundred and fifty young adults and parent volunteers who traveled with multiple tour buses, tractor trailers and several passenger vans. The message from the village noted, a special thanks for, thank you for allowing us to use the Vernon Hills High School to accommodate the group over the fourth of July holiday. Please express our sincere appreciation to John Fishel for coordinating the space to accommodate the bands. And for his patience and expertise in assisting our staff with arranging the band. Finally, please extend our sincere appreciation to the custodians Alejandro Bravo, Aggo Leon Nunez and Jose Bobi for being able, available to the groups upon their arrival at schools. And their supervisor, Jamie Cantoon, who worked on his days off to coordinate the schedule changes. As well as VHS Director of Buildings and Grounds, Jose Medina, who helped the original planning and made the rental possible. We certainly appreciate everyone's patience and dedication, your generosity to help make this year's parade a success is greatly appreciated.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, I really thought that was wonderful that they specifically named the members of our custodial staff and our Building and Grounds team who, you know, really, really showed what D one twenty-eight is all about.
And can you tell us the name of the Special Services Teacher that won the ISB Teacher of the Year Award?
Yes, Danielle Robner.
Danielle R O G N E R. Fantastic, we are very proud of Ms. Robner and on behalf of the board, congratulations on that.
It's a big deal.
It's a big deal.
Okay. Dan, can you call up a presentation for me for my report? Sorry about that, I was going to ask you to do that before you shut it down.
It's possible, if you would like, we could approve the consent vote agenda and then go back to the strategic plan update. We'll give you a time, but just a beat to bring that up.
Yes, the one I shared this afternoon.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as presented. Please say your name first.
Drunkie, so moved.
Rooney, second.
Thank you, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drunkie.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Paul Carney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Great motion passes. And we will go back to number five for the strategic plan update.
So one of the things that I intend to do is probably monthly provide during my superintendent's report, updates with progress in general of moving forward with the strategic plan. We will also have presentations and more fully developed. Descriptions of the work, but I definitely want to make sure that, you know, I'm committed to making sure the board is very clear on what we're doing on each of the three goal areas. So one of the things that I did was to capture the conversation that we had last. June, excuse me, twenty-seventh. And this is my. Google drawing things, we have also contracted with a much more skilled graphic design person who will make version two point oh much more beautiful than Denise Herman's version one point oh. But I think one of the things that I wanted to capture and that you all were so clearly articulating is as we were talking about the three goal areas, equity and inclusion. Health and wellbeing and exploring multiple paths and then looking at, because those are big, complex things, not one action plan is going to take care of them. So we were looking at the data and you were brainstorming and encouraging us to consider some action plans that you felt particularly drawn to. Or again, as an educational leader would encourage us to continue to explore. And you also noted how they overlapped. So that got me thinking about this Venn diagram and then placing the action plans that, that really you supported us moving further on this way. And it showed that very few of them are in only one category. Several of them, if we choose to adopt a daring port. Several of them, if we choose to adopt a daring portfolio. Or if we choose to adopt some of those things that will not only be moving us forward in one goal area, but also in a second goal area. And it will be the action plans themselves that dictate what kind of metrics we're going to be using um and other things like that. But I just wanted to give you a visual summary of our conversation and know that it will become more and more beautiful as um. As the, as the professionals get to work on it. Next slide, Dan. I also wanted to update the board on on what we're doing to communicate the approved strategic plan to the community as well as the staff. Um, so, um, actually, I believe it was today I sent my back to school letter to the staff. And um invited them to our launch party. That was always a sad day. I know, I I waited till the, it was only two weeks away, so I know, I know. Um, so that's one thing, so they understand um that this is going to be one of the things that we celebrate at the back to school opening event. Um, next Monday, we have all administrators returning. And we will go through a similar presentation to what the board had and take even a deeper dive. Because it's important to me that all administrators in the district be able to answer questions, know where we're going. And feel like they're playing a role in communicating and leading this work as well. Our opening day um will be on Tuesday, August ninth, and we intend to have a party. And all board members are invited to attend that party if you would like. I know the staff really enjoys getting to see. But um as many of you as possible, if it works for your work schedule, um, we have breakfast at seven four forty-five in the morning. And then the meeting will start at eight thirty and will be concluded by ten. Um, and again, if you can only stay for a portion of that, that would be fine. Um, during that time, we will focus on three priority goals. Uh, we will also give the general timeline that we reviewed. Um, we're going to invite participation, like we talked about with the staff, in helping to map out those detailed action plans. We will make sure that we make it engaging and make sure that the staff feels like they're connected to the agenda items. Um, and then we also are going to close by using a thought exchange to gather voice. Um, and ideas from the staff that will then be used to uh move forward our work on our first institute day, which is September sixth. So this will also be a day where, uh, you know, staff understanding the three goals and the potential action plans. Will have some really intense time to do some digging, give us some preferences, you know, you saw some other things up there. Where ideas about wellness centers are increasing access to mental health. What specifically will that look like? We saw some things up there about um improving access to social emotional learning or an advisory program. What specifically will that research look like? Um, so we see that being a very important day for staff input. We also set the goal um of having all of the action plans to the board by December. So that, again, as Dan talked about, we don't want to have a whole nother year go by without having movement forward on our action plans. Um, so we will have those to you. Um, and then once approved, we will have another institute day for events that might take coordination between both buildings. Um, and then one other thing that we did commit to have to you at our May meeting. Um, in addition to the strategic plan would be um the assessment and grading policy. Um, that we intend to have provided back to the board by the end of the school year.
Okay, pause there for a second. Just to make the connection that contingency budget part of that is because if we're going to look at. Uh, freshman mentor program, for example, will be sending teachers out to go examine other schools. Uh, that budget is where that money's being spent.
Absolutely.
So we can see the connection between this plan and that budget.
Yes.
I, I have a question on the action plan.
Yeah.
Are we? Are we to anticipate you'll have like three goals or three action plans, or do we have multiple? And then do we have to start thinking about prioritizing the action plans themselves? I'm just trying to sort of.
Well, I think we would, again, that's the beauty of going into the details of action planning. Is trying to coordinate what resources would we need? How much time would this take? And so that would be for between teacher feedback. And people who will be responsible for doing the work to do that audit. And say, you know, we, we brainstormed three goals and three action plans each. But when we mapped it out, that would stress the system too much. So that's one of the things that we would bring to the board then is to say, for our equity and inclusion goal. Here's the first um uh importance, or we, the one that we think will move the lever the greatest. Under health and wellbeing, here's the action plan that we feel is, will give us the biggest bang for the buck. So we will definitely bring to the board action plans that have, you know, timelines, persons responsible, resources required. So that you have a very informed decision to make about uh approving or asking us to scale back some of them.
And that, I mean, that decision, if you will, will be made on in December. But I am assuming we'll hear information about it before.
Absolutely, that's, I'm trying to model what our, what what my monthly um update will include is the actual process. Um, we might also have some of the action planning teams come and give some presentations even in October or November to the board. To to gather feedback from you as a stakeholder group. We, we intend to, again, really front load the feedback we're receiving from the staff in September. Um, and then also use some of our new communication tools and other things to make sure we're getting student voice. As well as parent voice in September and October, and then really putting the plans together in this, in November to bring to all of you.
And I think in December. That gives us the opportunity to have enough time to see. Um, some of the pieces of the budget that we just can't put in yet. For example, the longer term capital maintenance plan, the collective bargaining agreement. That, you know, all the decisions that we make about the strategic plan and funds exist in the context. Of the greater budget that we have, and we'll have to have um really thoughtful. Conversations that don't exist in a vacuum, but by December, we'll be able to take a step back and look at the whole picture. So that we know where those items exist in relation to other line items.
It will also help, help some of our departments and um programs. Help with their budgeting process that starts in January. So, you know, once we're clear. Um, on some of the things that are going to be action plans, that will help. Each individual person who manages a buzz, a budget, make some of their own priorities cleaner and and quicker for decision making.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to make sure we have enough time to go through that, all of that content. So I'm just wondering. How should that twelve twelve meeting be, so we get enough time to go through?
Well, I would want that to be an uh where you're seeing draft action plans sooner than that. So I would, that would not be a surprise where you're seeing something for the first time. Um, and I would definitely give the board as much time as possible, so not just the weekend that we post some of those things. Um, we could definitely, as soon as they're ready in November, give them to the board for pre-read and um opportunities. To ask questions before we have the discussion.
Sounds great. That's all? Oh, great, okay, fantastic. Any other questions before we move on? Okay. Thank you. Um, so we are now in number seven, Program and Personnel Committee. Um, we had our first reading of um some policies. Um, at our earlier committee re- committee meeting. So these will be our first reading for our board meeting.
And we had, uh, so all the policies are listed on there that um our first reading, we had a good discussion on all these board policies. Um, some questions from the board during our committee meeting. Um, we will follow up and get back on those questions and comments at our second reading. At our August eighth committee meeting and then for second reading. And then they'll present at the August board meeting for second reading and approval at that time. So um, all of those policies are listed and presented.
Thank you, and because we did read and discuss them at length at five thirty, we are not going to do that again uh tonight. We'll move on to item B, Resolution to Regulate Expense Reimbursements for Board Policies two, one, two, five. Board Member Compensation Expenses and uh Policy five sixty expenses.
Yeah, so this is um. Is required under Board Policy two, one, two, five, a resolution to regulate expense reimbursements. Um, and we do this yearly in July since our fiscal year starts um July one and goes through the end of June. So this um was approved last year in July, and we are presenting it again uh this year, same resolution. There were no changes to the resolution um that was uh approved last year.
Okay, great, but I'll be looking for a motion to approve Board Policy two, one, two, five and um. Five sixty as presented.
Carmichael, so moved.
Pocarni, second.
Thank you, any discussion?
So the expenses one just stays the same as the policy that we have on the books.
Yep, no changes.
And just for reference, this resolution is also um linked in our board policies um on two, one, two, five.
Great, thank you. If we have no further discussion, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drunky.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Pocarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Great, motion passes. Moving on to item seven C, District Seventy Intergovernmental Agreement.
So we have um already entered into a shared um data. Was um sharing agreement with District Sixty-eight and District Seventy-three, timing of this, now we are entering into one with District Seventy. They have already approved it at their board meeting in June and um. This is uh one presented and um for you for District Seventy for tonight for.
Great, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Drunky, motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with District Seventy for the sharing of student data for educational study.
Carmichael, second.
Thank you, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Drunky.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Pocarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Great, motion passes. This is the place where normally I would turn it over to Chairperson Rooney for the Facilities and Finance Committee. But seeing as though the only item is the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-three budget, which we are tabling. Then we will move right on to reports. You definitely win for the shortest committee for the evening. Well done. Um, for IASB, um, please note, we have two events. Um, the Joint Annual Conference, uh, which will take place November eighteenth to twentieth. Um, same weekend as always before um Thanksgiving. Uh, we always um enjoy attending as a group and certainly encourage everyone if they're available to please make uh time in their calendar to do so. Um, we will be sending out this form. It was sent via email, my apologies. Um, Carol sent it out to look for that in your board email. And uh, we're looking for a response by. By August eighth.
Yes.
By the committee meeting.
Does that also include the pre-conference? So we know what the titles of all of them are.
Yes.
Should we coordinate that in any way?
So we always do talk about coordinating so that we're attending different workshops and then we can share information. So yes, maybe as a future agenda item. We could talk about that closer to the workshops, because, oh, do we, we do have to. Oh, no, no, we only have to, um, this is the pre-conference workshops that we have to for uh by August eighth.
They do fill up quickly, so that would be one thing why the timing is pretty important on. And Friday.
Yeah, there are Thursday and Friday pre- pre-conference workshops. And then the uh conference technically, the bulk of it takes place on Saturday and a little bit on Sunday. Um. So I think the workshops that we want to coordinate are the ones that take place on Saturday, correct?
I was actually thinking Friday.
Friday.
Oh, okay, yeah, so we could add that.
Because those are the half-day, excuse me, the half-day ones or the full-day ones.
Right. That's right. Okay, so maybe we'll add that to the agenda for P and P.
P.
Yeah, where we can discuss who wants to attend which workshop and we'll coordinate that, okay?
So look them over beforehand to get an idea of what's.
Yes, what's of interest, what we think might be um pertinent to our board and to our district.
And I think it also will be um helpful for Carol to know if you, if you do know yet, if you'll be staying overnight and things like that. To get the hotel reservation squared away and things like that, so the more information, the better for us for planning.
Great, um, the other um ISB, there is uh two save the dates went out with um Lake Division meetings. One for Wednesday, October twelfth. Uh, the topic will be communicating with legislators and advocating for our districts. Um, also Wednesday, March eighth, um, there's a speaker um from IASA. Talking about telling your district story while building a strong community through effective board superintendent relationships. Uh, both of these events can be found in Board Docs. If you go to the top and to the library and click on events, you can see all of these events. Um, and that is all we have for IASB. Um, moving on to the SEDOL update.
Just a small one, um, as you may recall, the original June meeting. Um, I think I had reported on this last time we met. The original June meeting had been. Um, canceled due to the fact that there, there was not a quorum. Not a forum, no voting body available, um, and it was rescheduled um just before the July fourth holiday weekend. We actually, full disclosure, was, were not able to have a representative at the meeting. I was out of town. Uh, everyone else was kind of tied up too, but um I reviewed the minutes and it seems that the only. Major things that, eh, there was a lot of business that had to be passed, it was a large agenda, but any major things, um. There were just some new appointments made to the executive boards, so some changes there. Uh, there was a presentation and approval for the tentative budget uh for the upcoming school year. And the plan is to adopt it next month. Um, and then they also established meeting dates for the upcoming school year. So if anyone is ever interested in attending, I mean, I'm, I'm there as consistently as I can be. But if you're ever interested in coming along and learning more, it's certainly, it's interesting. Um, and it's important that, you know, we, we do recognize that our district students attend the SEDOL schools. So sometimes it's nice to have a, a good understanding of how those programs work. Um, and then additionally, there was an extension of a collective bargaining agreement with the SSSA. Which stands for the SEDOL Support Staff Association, as well as some um MOUs. For both the SSSA and the SEDOL Teachers Union, so just some, you know. Stuff that they took care of on that agenda. Um, but it was important that, that it was approved and moved so that they could get going on their um plans for the school year.
Well, is that?
Okay, thank you, we really appreciate the time you take to be our representative.
I feel really bad, I feel bad, I couldn't be there, but it sounds like a quorum showed up and they got done what they needed to.
Exactly.
Okay, great, any questions about SEDOL? Okay, uh, future agenda items, we all, we already covered the um Joint Annual Conference, uh, pre-conference workshops that we'll discuss. At the next committee meeting on August eighth, any other future agenda items? Okay, then, um, if I could, um. It's, the next thing says adjournment, but I think we're looking for a motion to. Move to executive session, not to adjourn. So if I could please have a. It's okay. We're, we're still gonna ask for a motion uh to convene an executive session for the purpose of. Uh, discussing employment of an employee as well as collective bargaining issues.
Rooney, so moved. Rooney, so moved.
Benjamin, second. Thank you. We are uh going to convene in closed session immediately.
So good.
Hessel.
Aye.
Pocarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drunky.
Great. Motion passes. Excellent. So I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to return to open session.
Carmichael, move to return to open session.
Rooney, second.
Great, eight forty-seven PM noted. Uh, roll call, please.
Pocarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drunky.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye. Motion passes. So we are back in open session and I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Drunky, so moved.
Drunky moves?
Hold on. Okay, now do it.
Drunky, I move to adjourn.
Carmichael, second.
Roll call, please.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drunky.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Pocarni.
Aye.